Hello, my name is Francesca Wedemeyer with the League of Women Voters, and I will be your moderator for this virtual candidate forum. A huge thank you to our host organization, the Rancho Bernardo Community Council, for making this evening happening, to our candidates who are joining us this evening, and all of you who have decided to spend your evening learning about the candidates that will represent your communities. Even though we miss seeing you in person, we are reaching more people than ever with Zoom, and we can hear directly from the candidates to help make this important decision on your ballots. And you don't even have to get dressed, or comb your hair, or leave the house. If you have any questions, please look in the chat box to find out how to reach us. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. Our Voters Edge website is your online research for more information about the candidates, ballot issues, and detailed voting information. All candidates for local offices have been invited to include their information there with no cost to the candidate. I expect that both candidates here have included their information there. You'll find a link to this beautiful website in the chat. The League moderates candidate forums using a format that is fair and informative and time-tested. We have asked the candidates to keep the issues at the position rather than personal attacks because our goal is for voters to be able to learn more about the candidates themselves than anything they could get from a campaign ad or social media. The views expressed are those of the candidates, not the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement by the sponsor or by the League of any candidate. We are recording the forum, and it will be available unedited from beginning to end to the public on our website, lvw@san diego.org. That'll also be in the chat in case you want to open that up and pull it up. We ask attendees to submit questions beforehand online, but you can also submit questions using the link provided in the chat box. Please remember to use civility and respect in wording your questions and frame them so both candidates can answer. Assisting tonight, we have League question screeners Barra Flum and Nandita Carr, who have done an amazing job, and a screener from the host group, Kevin Messer, who has been incredibly valuable for us in working through the questions and preparing for this evening, from the Rancho Bernardo Community Council, who's the chairman of the Government Relations and Utilities Committee. Our timekeeper this evening is Scarlett Lopez, and our Zoom administrator is Frances Cudillo. We will adjourn by 7:30. So please note that as this was originally scheduled for an hour and a half, we realized that's a very long time to ask everyone to sit at the end of a very long day, potentially a very long week, so we'll go ahead and try to close this up after the hour has finished. This forum is for the Office of City Council, District Five. All viable candidates were invited, and they are participating this evening. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening statements, two minutes for their closing, and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. We will alternate who answers each question first. Prior to the start of this event, the order of speaking was determined randomly. Marnie will give the opening statement, and Joe will have the first closing statement. So, Marnie, your opening statement, please, then Joe. Thank you both very much.
Marnie, you're on mute.
Generally, part of these meetings now, someone has to say you're on mute. But thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and to the Rancho Bernardo Community Council for hosting tonight. I'm glad to virtually get to see everyone, although I miss you. I'm here at my home in Scripps Ranch. This is actually where I grew up. I live about a mile down the street from the house I grew up in, where my parents still are. But I am a deputy city attorney here in San Diego. I prosecute environmental polluters here. I am prosecuting some of the opioid manufacturers for their fraud in their marketing, which caused so much addiction and a burden on our 911 system. And currently, I'm prosecuting price gougers and COVID scammers during this pandemic, unfortunately. But as I said, I grew up, I'm a native San Diegan. I went to all public schools my whole life here in San Diego. I graduated from Scripps Ranch High School 20 years ago now. And I'm running for city council because I want to make sure that every kid and every family in San Diego has the same opportunity for a bright future, just like I did. And to me, that means that we make sure we take care of our city and our environment, and keep our air clean, our water clean, and make sure that we fight climate change to protect us from wildfires, which we see are getting worse every year and threatening our communities. My parents' home almost was burned in the 2003 Cedar Fire and had to evacuate. And I know what that's like. The San Diego firefighters have endorsed me for this race because I think I'll do the best job protecting our communities. You know, I'm running to make sure that we also create our real solutions to our homelessness issues. We don't have enough addiction care or mental health treatment care in our society. We also need park clinicians to come help people in need. We need to work on housing affordability at all levels. You know, I hear from employers all the time, one of their biggest barriers to growing in San Diego is that their employees need to be able to afford houses to live here in good school districts for their families. I want to make sure we continue attracting those good science and biotech jobs to San Diego, which is part of our industry that's thriving right now, even in the pandemic. I've actually lived through an epidemic before. I served in the Peace Corps in Botswana in Sub-Saharan Africa during the height of the AIDS epidemic in the early 2000s. My job was to take care of children who were born HIV-positive, whose parents had died of AIDS. And I've deployed contact tracing and testing programs and public health programs. And so I know a strong, consistent public health message that keeps everyone safe and is science-based, evidence-based, gets people all on board, is also the key to making sure our economy reopens and stays open, so we don't have to keep closing again. Same thing with our schools. And it's also very important to me that we have leadership at City Hall that treats everyone with respect and dignity and kindness. You know, no matter what religion you believe in, no matter where you're from, what you look like, what gender you are, who you love, you deserve to be treated with dignity and respect, and we deserve a government that promotes that in our society. So I'm really excited to be running, happy to answer all the questions tonight, and let's keep this dialogue going. Thank you.
All right, Joe?
Well, thank you, and Marnie, thank you for participating. It's always good to see you, although it was better when we could see each other in person. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the Rancho Bernardo Community Council for hosting this. This is such an important part of the process, an important part of our democracy, is for those of you tuning in to actually hear what we have to say. I have been living in San Diego for almost 20 years of my adult life. When my wife and I moved back here, about a little over 15 years ago, we decided to make Rancho Bernardo our home. We love this part of the city, part of the county. We outgrew our house in Rancho Bernardo and moved a little bit further west, but still in the 19127 zip code. I decided to run for city council because of a number of hats I wear, but the most important is the hat of a parent. I've got three kids that are 12, 11, and 9, and I'm really concerned about the direction our region's going, and frankly, concerned about what I think is a lack of strong leadership in the region. You know, San Diego's getting known for kicking the can down the road and not addressing some of our largest challenges. And I think we saw that a few years ago with the hepatitis crisis, which was a big impetus for why I decided to run. We saw a lot of our elected leaders pointing fingers at each other, and that's not leadership. When I'm hopefully elected, there are a number of issues I want to focus on. I think what we were talking about in the primaries is very different than the world looks today. So I certainly want to focus on our regional economy, try to make sure people are employed. Obviously, our city budget is going to be decimated from a lack of tax revenue. And so I want to make sure we prioritize things like our recreation centers, our libraries, and our parks, and making sure we keep those open as much as possible. I want to focus on our roads, and I want to make sure our tax dollars that we're spending go to road repairs instead of large mass transit projects that really aren't viable in District Five. I want to continue to support our police and our law enforcement. It's part of why I've been endorsed by Shelley Zimmerman, our retired police chief, and Sheriff Bill Gore. So those are a few of those issues that are important to me. You'll hear more, obviously, throughout the night, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Joe. A quick reminder to both of our candidates that we are working on a time system. Please keep your eyes on the timer and please stay within the time bound. So for each question, you'll have a minute to answer. As you see it go down, we might have to interrupt to get the conversation going. So thank you for bearing that in mind and keeping an eye on the time. All right, so to begin, Joe, you'll be taking this question first. If elected, what are the top challenges you would tackle that are specific to District Five, and how would you tackle them?
Sure, well, I think there are two that are top of mind to me. Well, let's say three. And I've actually talked about a number of them. One is roads. You know, I frankly didn't realize, because we've made some progress in the city on our roads, but I didn't realize how bad some of our roads still are in District Five. And I think it's really important that we make road repair a priority. I also think we should be more innovative on how we repair our roads. Some cities are doing things like putting Kevlar-type materials on our roads that actually last longer. So I think we need to make that a priority, and I would focus on that. Police, obviously, our police are very much under attack in the city right now. They were targeted last night by violent protesters. So I think I would play a role and lead a leadership role in trying to make sure I'm defending our police. And then, again, the economy, and trying to keep and fight for libraries, our parks, and our community centers. Next year, the city council is going to have some really tough budget decisions to make, and I plan to be an advocate to try and make sure we keep those core services open for our community.
Thank you. Marnie?
Okay, yep, so for me, top of mind in District Five is the core service our city needs to provide is basic public safety. And to me, that means making sure we have more support for our law enforcement and community policing. I actually work in law enforcement as a deputy city attorney. I work with our police officers every day, and I see the very difficult jobs they have to do. Also, our firefighters, they're stretched very thin right now. We have over 16,000 firefighters fighting fires in California, so we need to make sure that's taken care of. Our 911 response times is also important. We need to reduce traffic. And Joe, I agree with you on the roads. I was out in Seven Oaks North last night knocking doors very safely with a mask, and some of those roads are terrible. They finally fixed Scripps Valley Parkway here. So we need to prioritize our infrastructure also as a way to get people back to work. You know, make sure we get the grants and have shovel-ready projects here in San Diego ready to go when they're funded, so our people get back to work. So I want to be able to focus on that as our economic recovery project as well, keep people safe and keep people back to work.
Thank you. Something that is obviously very near and dear to the hearts of District Five. In recent years, insurance companies are dropping coverage in areas regularly affected by wildfires. Do you have a plan in place to ensure these companies do not drop that coverage? And Marnie, you can go ahead and start with that one.
Okay, I've actually been talking to homeowners about losing their homeowner's insurance for over a year, when I was knocking doors in the primary in my campaign. We knocked over 20,000 doors to talk to voters because that's what's most important, is listening to you in this campaign. And I talked to 17 homeowners in a row on the south side of Pomerado and Scripps Ranch who'd lost their homes, and then a whole bunch more in Rancho Bernardo. And then they lost their homeowner's insurance recently because of the fire zone. So I called Brian Mainshine, who has endorsed me for this race because I believe endorsements are also relationships. And I asked him, what are we going to do? And he then said, we're going to call Ricardo Lara. We're talking about it, and that's why we have the one-year ban on dropping folks from fire zones. However, city council can't do as much as the state can because the state is in control of insurance plans throughout California, but I can make sure I work well with our other elected representatives, such as Senator Toni Atkins, who's also endorsing for this race. And I've talked to her about this issue as well, so that we elevate people's concerns from the city to higher government and vice versa, like we need to, because that's a very important concern.
Thank you, Joe.
This is a very important and personal issue for me. We fortunately haven't lost our home. We evacuated in 2007 when my wife was nine months pregnant, got back in our house in Rancho Bernardo, and two days later, she gave birth. We evacuated in 2014 when all three of our kids were in different schools, kindergarten and two different preschools. And trying to track down our kids in the middle of evacuation was very scary as well. We live in a fire zone, and we actually tried to get other homeowners' insurance because of how expensive it is. And I think that's personal experience. I am a homeowner in the district. I'm the only candidate that's a homeowner in the district. And so I see that. I've actually tried to get other homeowners' insurance, and we haven't been able to. So I have thought about this, and unfortunately, it is a statewide issue. But one of my ideas is to actually work with the California League of Cities because it's not unique to San Diego. Obviously, we see fires raging throughout the rest of the state as well. So work with the California League of Cities and create an advocacy group to try and make sure that the Insurance Commissioner in the state of California protects us and protects our interests when it comes to homeowners' insurance.
Thank you. Switching gears a little bit to something equally as scary. We're going to talk a little bit about COVID-19. So addressing COVID-19 is creating budget deficiencies, especially for infrastructure. How do you plan to take on these budget challenges? And Joe, you're going to go ahead and start us with that one.
Right, I think I've referenced it a couple of times already. I mean, I really, truly believe that the two primary roles of local government, at least at the city level, are infrastructure and public safety. And so, again, when we are looking at making really tough decisions, we have to prioritize public safety and infrastructure, including, top of that list is roads. You know, if we delay investing our infrastructure today, it costs us exponentially more to repair down the road, no pun intended. So again, those are things that I would focus on as high priorities in the budget. You know, I think one thing that's notable with COVID-19 is the lack of tourism dollars that we're seeing in our hotels. That's part of why I've been so focused on innovative ideas to bring more tourism dollars back to San Diego when we get to that point where there really is an increase in tourism in the country. I want to make San Diego really viewed as the safest place to travel to so we increase our tax basis here in San Diego.
Yes, as many of you know, the city is facing right now a $300 million budget deficit. Luckily, the CARES Act funding came through at about $249 million to help us with this budget hole this year, but we're projected to have another $300 million deficit because, as Joe pointed out, our TOT tax has been plummeting with our lack of conferences and tourists. You know, we have business conference tourists that come all the time. So, one, we need to be the safe destination that people feel comfortable coming to and that we feel comfortable bringing tourists to. So public health is top of mind. With our infrastructure projects, we need to be the city that's ready to be funded first. You know, in the 2008 crash, cities that had shovel-ready infrastructure projects ready to go were the ones who were funded first. And I want to see San Diego have those projects ready. As Joe pointed out, if we put off our infrastructure maintenance for our roads, our stormwater transportation, it's going to be a huge problem because I see the lawsuits that come in as a city attorney when things break and businesses or homes flood. So putting it forward and making sure we have shovel-ready projects to go will help us recover from the economic crisis.
Thank you. What measures will you be taking to create jobs, especially with rampant unemployment due to COVID-19? Marnie, you can go ahead and start us with that.
Yep, well, one of them is our public works projects, as we've been talking about. And I want to see us do green infrastructure. For example, right now, we treat rainwater runoff as a liability in San Diego. It floods our streets, it goes straight into our storm drains and out into the ocean, and we can't surf or swim for three days because the pollution is backed up. Why don't, instead, we have natural irrigation systems that actually reuses the water or recycles it naturally or catches it? We go through droughts all the time. So these are green jobs we can create. Solar work is actually, electric vehicle charging is actually on the rise, so we need to make sure we do those as well. But also investing in our biotech industry. We have some of the best institutions in the world here in San Diego, including UCSD and USD. We have wonderful biotech partners who are on the forefront of developing a vaccine that may very well save so many lives in this pandemic. So making sure we keep attracting those jobs and those grants that we deserve here in San Diego is a big part of what we need to do to get people back to work and on their feet again. And we have to make sure we do it equitably, too. A lot more women are suffering from lack of hospitality jobs, and we need to make sure we take care of them.
Joe?
Well, you know, San Diego's always been and continues to be a small business economy. Over 98% of the businesses here in San Diego were small businesses. And I think, you know, as someone who started a small business eight years ago in San Diego, it's really important that we try and make sure our businesses and our business community can hire back the people that they had to let go. You know, I think it's critically important to do things like, for the city, waiving business licensing fees for a period of time, whether it's a year or two years. But something small that can help businesses start and hopefully encourage people to start new businesses. As I mentioned before, I want to increase the amount of tourism that we have here. Not only did I talk to the airport about how we can try and do that, but I've also talked to the port once cruise ships start coming as well. Obviously, the more our hotels and restaurants closer to downtown are filled up, the more people are filling up the hotels and motels and restaurants closer to District Five because of, obviously, supply and demand. So to me, it's important that we have policies that are business-friendly and level the playing field for everyone to have an opportunity.
Thank you. Once more, I just want to remind both of you, it's totally fine to finish early. We're not supposed to be going over the one-minute mark. Thank you. All right, so we're going to switch gears a little. We've started kind of going in the green direction already. So in order to fulfill the city's climate action plan, do you think steps need to be taken to incentivize individual action? So, Joe, you can go ahead and start us with that one.
Well, that's a really challenging question. Incentivizing action sometimes sounds like penalizing other actions. So, you know, I think we need to try and achieve our climate action goals. I've been concerned about the climate action plan that was drafted and adopted by the city because of some of the, what I think are false assumptions in there. For example, it relies on a certain number of trees that are going to be planted throughout the city to achieve those goals, but doesn't take into account the energy that is required to water all of those trees and the carbon footprint that would be a consequence of watering all of those trees. I think in San Diego, because we're so innovative, we see some really creative things happening. Salk Institute is working on making plants have root system that actually keep more carbon and provide more oxygen in the air and improve the food supply. I think we should be looking at things like that and really supporting those initiatives.
Thank you. Marnie?
Yes, I think it's everyone's responsibility to pitch in to take care of our environment. And I think the city needs to do a better job being a partner on the other end. So one of my big priorities is fixing our broken recycling system, for example. How many of us sort out our recycling, put it in the blue bin? But right now, a lot of it is going to the Miramar landfill because we're no longer shipping it to China on a barge that was fueled by fossil fuels. I don't know if that ever was a good idea. How about we process it here, actually create a processing center? That will create jobs as well. I think we also need to incentivize homeowners, which we're already doing with rebates for solar panels or electric vehicle charging stations, which I think is also something that our workers want to do and want to install. We need to be better also with businesses. The city needs to be better at customer service overall. You know, I helped draft the ordinance that allowed businesses to expand onto sidewalks and parking lots during the pandemic, which made total sense. But why don't we have those innovative and flexible, quick ideas all the time in the city and be more friendly to environmental ideas businesses come forth as well? So, sorry, time, see, we're doing better, doing better at time. Joe and I are both lawyers, so we talk a lot.
Yesterday, Governor Newsom ordered phase-out of gas-powered vehicles by 2035. I'm sure you both saw them. What are your thoughts on this order? Marnie, you can go ahead and start us off there.
I think that getting more gas-powered vehicles off the road is a very laudable goal. I mean, the American Lung's Association found that San Diego had the sixth worst air quality in the country. This is before the pandemic. And it's going to get worse with the fires and the ash in the air. So getting cars that have fossil fuel off the road is great. I don't know if we're going to be ready for that by 2035, though. And a lot of it is we don't have the infrastructure to support it. You know, if we're going to build new houses, we need to build them with electric vehicle charging stations in them. It's so much cheaper to build it from the get-go than to retrofit buildings and put them in after. Same thing with an environmental justice perspective. How are we going to make sure electric vehicles are accessible to all levels and all income groups? Same thing if they don't have the infrastructure in all neighborhoods. So these are things I'm thinking about as we go through, but I think it's good to strive to keep our air clean and get carbon out of our air so that, you know, kids don't suffer from asthma and we can go running out in Miramar Lake and Lake Hodges and not worry about the air quality. So, thank you.
Joe?
I don't support that goal on that timeline. You know, I think you're talking about, and Marnie was talking about it as well, equity. And I think what you're doing is you're creating a real challenge for people to be able to afford a vehicle if we go that direction on that sort of timeline. You know, I do think that you see things like Tesla, and you see innovation, and you see the market drive cleaner transportation. And I really think that that's the way we need to go. And unfortunately, we have people in the state that have really demonized some of those innovative individuals, folks that work in Sacramento, that, you know, we really shouldn't be demonizing people that want to invest in innovative ideas that are good for the environment, that bring us a step forward. And again, with Tesla, you saw the initial cars that were pretty pricey, and you saw a real push to make them more affordable. To me, that's the way we need to go to try and put electric cars in the reach of most people here in California.
What is your opinion on the Community Choice Aggregation Program, the CPP, and its goal to be 100% renewable energy by 2035? It's pretty related to our previous question.
Again, first, we're starting to get the hang of this, all right. So I was very concerned about the city taking over energy. And I've said that before, I've said it publicly. I think that we have seen what's happened in the past when the state government has taken over energy. That's what resulted in Gray Davis essentially being recalled, rolling blackouts. And frankly, the city decided to go down this road at the same time we were having all sorts of challenges with the water department, where we couldn't accurately read people's water meters. And so the idea that when we were doing so poorly as a city government in one area, one utility, water, we're going to now go into energy, is really scary to me. But what I've also said is, now that we've gone down this road, and it wasn't my council or Marnie's council, it's already down this road, I will do whatever I can to try and make sure it is successful. I think they're obviously laudable goals, and I think we are doing very well already in the private sector with clean energy, but we can do better.
I think the goal of getting to clean energy that is reliable and affordable is an incredibly important goal. I mean, San Diego is the second-largest city in the state of California, and we've joined with other cities around us, National City, Chula Vista, others, to try and get this project off the ground. And if we can succeed, we can set clean energy prices for all of Southern California, which will be an amazing feat for us. I mean, no matter what's happening with climate policy in DC, we here in San Diego are keeping our air clean. But I, too, share Joe's concern. We need to have experts who are actually leading the way on this. We need to have qualified public servants and make sure they are vetted and know how to deal in energy buying. It's a very highly regulated industry, and people rely on power. We can't have our power cutting out. There are people with medical devices who need it. So I agree with Joe, it has to be done carefully and done right. We can't have the same problems we had with the water department, which luckily we fixed. But it's going to be a priority of mine to make sure we have qualified people on that board to get it done, get it done right.
Switching gears a little bit here, what will you do to ensure that community members have more of a say in matters that affect their community, including residential and commercial development? Marnie, can you go ahead and start us off there?
Yep. First, the community council is a great example of it, and our community planning groups. You know, I do not agree with the current effort to weaken the power of the community planning groups. I think that local control is very important. I do not agree that we should make planning decisions from Sacramento. I think we know our neighborhoods best. Like Joe and I have both said, we have both evacuated from fires. You know, we know where these issues and these dangers are, so they should be local issues. Also, listening to voters and being an available representative is huge. You know, when I was at Doors yesterday in Seven Oaks North, I heard about someone who had almost been hit by a car because there's no sign to cross this busy street going to the Seven Oaks North Recreation Center. So why can't we put a sign there? These things shouldn't be that hard. So listening to our constituents, making sure we know how to plan so our infrastructure isn't overburdened. Traffic is a very important issue to me because of our air quality and because I hate being stuck in traffic. We should be home with our families or going to school or going to churches or gyms, not stuck on the road. So local planning groups can be a big part of this discussion.
Joe?
I agree. I think one very simple answer to your question is showing up. I think your council member should be showing up at your community planning group meetings, should be listening to the community, should be taking that community input before voting on issues that come before the council, particularly when it comes to things like residential planning and building and zoning issues. So I think showing up and listening is critically important. I'm also a big supporter of the community planning groups. One of my first initiatives I proposed as a candidate was to strengthen the community planning groups and give them an additional role on the issue of school safety, called my Safer Schools Initiative, which would assess half-mile within every school in the city through the community planning groups to identify things like stop signs, crosswalks, speed limits, things that might need to be improved before a tragedy happens. Did that intentionally because I think it's important to keep our kids and our parents and our teachers safe. I think also it was a signal to those that want to attack our community planners that I see them as an important part of the process.
Thank you. Speaking of planning, do you think there is an imbalance in representation on the planning commission tending towards development interests? Joe, you can go ahead and start us off there.
Yes. If you look at how many times community planning groups have recommended against projects, and the planning commission has green-lighted them anyway, yes, I think there is either an imbalance or at least in some way insufficient consideration given to local communities in planning decisions with the planning commission. I haven't looked at exactly who sits on the planning commission currently, but I do think, again, we've seen an attack on our community planning groups. And I think that we need to help our planning, community planning groups. There is improvement there. Certainly, there was an audit that was done, and there are certainly areas for improvement in terms of things like elections for community planning group members, making sure agendas are posted, things like that. But frankly, the city should be investing more in these community planning groups and giving them the support so they can do their jobs better, and then they should listen to.
Thank you. Marnie? Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, I think there needs to be a balance as well. I agree with Joe on the planning groups. We need, in both, we need developers who have expertise in developing and how things have been done. But we also need a balance of just community members who are knowing what's going on in their district. So when I've been knocking on doors in Rancho Penasitos, for example, in Carmel Mountain, I heard from voters who said, Marty, listen, I'm not against new housing. I know we need it for everyone. You know, they're scared their kids can't afford to live in San Diego because of our housing affordability crisis. But one of them said, Marty, I'm a teacher. And if we build new housing here, I've been told by the principal, I might have to deforty kids in my classroom. And that's not, we can't have that. You know, that's not fair for kids, that's not fair for teachers. So one of my big pushes is we need to plan more holistically. Why aren't the school districts talking to the planning commission, talking to the city council about if we have this many houses? How many schools do we need? We already have bad traffic. Even if we don't build another house, we still need solutions to traffic now, is what I'm telling everyone as well. So I think we need a balance on the community planning groups and even get some educators in there as well. That'd be great, and firefighters too.
Thank you. One last question about planning. The city's planning groups have received criticism for lack of transparency and representation. What is your view of the role of the planning group and what revisions would you make, if any?
My turn first? Okay. One is, I've heard from some community planning groups that they need better training on the Brown Act, for example. Which, you know, as a city attorney, that is something I deal with every day. I've been working at City Hall for the past two and a half years now, and I advise the city council and the mayor, bring items to docket before city council. I know how the gears work at City Hall. I'll be able to hit the ground running from day one. But I understand why volunteers and community planning groups wouldn't have that knowledge. So making sure they have the tools they need to know when to notice meetings and docket things and comply with the rules, I think is part of the big problem. It's just a lack of education. And the city could provide better support in that. I think that the planning groups are made up of citizens who want to do the right thing and are coming forward and donating their time to be similarly engaged, and we should reward that and encourage that. I think also we need to make sure that the meetings are accessible, which has been great, that we have a silver lining of having things on Zoom, even at City Hall now. You can call in, you don't have to go down there to participate, which many people with young children or people who had to work jobs during the day could never participate in City Hall before like they can now. So let's continue that with the planning groups.
Thank you, Marty. All right, Joe?
One of my thoughts is that, you know, we need to staff our community planning groups. Now, the city has almost 12,000 employees, and yet we have these community planning groups that we say play a vital role, and I believe they play a vital role, but we don't put city resources to supporting them. And so, you know, Marty's comment about the Brown Act, I agree. People could use more training, but if they actually have someone sitting there with them, if they actually have someone that's posting their agendas for them, that's keeping them on task when it's time to have elections to replace people and people are turned out. If their staff is actually supporting these community planning groups, then these community planning group members, the volunteers, can really focus on what they're really there for, which is giving that community input as opposed to the administrative side of things that can really consume them if that was really all they were focused on as opposed to what they're meant for. So I really think a significant improvement that would help all parties, all interested parties, would be to staff the community planning groups.
Thank you, Joe. The final, as far as planning, what is your assessment of transit in District Five? And do you have a plan to improve it? Joe, can you start us off, please?
Yeah, you know, I think transit in terms of public transit is minimal in District Five. And, you know, frankly, we've seen a proposal from Sandag that's 170 billion plus dollars that doesn't really do anything to improve transit in District Five. If you look at the map, there are two stops in all District Five. For all the residents of District Five, there'd be two stops. You know, my thought is that we really need to, again, continue to invest in roads. One of the worst things for our environment are cars sitting in traffic. We need to make sure our cars are moving on the roads, and that's really what we need to be focusing on predominantly. I know for some, you know, taking the bus is their only option. And obviously, one of the great things about buses is you can end routes that are not popular. You can increase routes when they are popular. So I certainly support making sure we have access to buses. But beyond that, we really need to make sure we keep cars moving.
Marty?
So I believe that people are not using transit in San Diego because we've built a system that doesn't work. For example, I have tried, I actually am a regular bus commuter when I can before the pandemic. I would, I live right by the Trader Joe's in Scripps Ranch. I'd hop over to the Miramar College Transit Station, get free parking. City, you have to pay 180 bucks a month to park downtown. And it would be a 20 minute ride, no stops on the 110 Express Bus. It's me and a lot of other professionals. We have our laptops out, coffee mugs. It stops running to come back home at 5:15 PM. When am I out by 5:15 PM? It also uses the carpal infrastructure we've already built on the I-15 corridor. So we're not using the resources we can. I've talked to people who commute on the 56 every day, and they're stuck in traffic going west in the morning and east in the evening. And they said, Marty, if you build a third lane, have a bus only commuter lane, so we have options. Now, everyone needs to take the bus, but if you don't, guess what? You want commuters like me off the road, so you have less traffic. And every study I've seen says if you just build more roads and that's your only plan, they fill up and we don't reduce traffic. So we need two solutions to this problem.
Thank you, Marty. Switching gears a little bit here, what is your opinion of the police union and their role in protecting the police? Marty, can you go ahead and kick us off?
Yes, I am a strong supporter of our law enforcement. I work with them every day as a deputy city attorney. I believe that unions are important to make sure that workers have a voice and that the police have a voice in how the city does public safety. You know, who better to hear from than the experts themselves? I also want to make sure that we support our officers and take the burden off them. We shouldn't be calling 911 for every mental health episode or homeless person in the city or someone addicted to drugs. We need to have actual mental health treatment. In the ER, it shouldn't be the only place we get to take people because that costs us a lot of money. Our jails should not be our mental health treatment centers. That costs us a lot of money as taxpayers and yet provides no results. So I want to see us actually make sure we invest in our law enforcement, give them the training and the support they need, whether that's per clinician, psychiatric emergency response team clinicians, it's de-escalation training, it's making sure that we have equity training and making sure we're aware of any racial biases that we all have, not just in policing, and working alongside our law enforcement to make sure that they're stronger and better and serve the public as they intend to do.
Joe?
So, as I said in my opening statement, I'm a strong supporter of law enforcement. I've got law enforcement in my family. And I do have the endorsement of retired police chief Shelley Zimmerman, Sheriff Bill Gore. And, you know, I think that we have problems in this country with some of the police unions. I've talked to Chief Zimmerman about this, and she said that our union here in San Diego is actually very cooperative. She tells a story about when she first took over as chief, and she had to get rid of a number of officers for bad performance, frankly. And the union didn't stand in the way. The union supported that. When the city of San Diego decided to go to a body cam policy, we're one of the first large cities to adopt department-wide body cam program. It was the police chief and the union that jointly penned an op ed supporting that. So I don't think our union, our police union here, is really standing in the way. I think people are entitled to due process rights, and so I don't think they're standing in the way. And I think there are problems in other parts of the country, but not here.
I think our moderator's frozen.
They are, yeah.
Hey, every Zoom debate has to have a tech issue.
Surprised my kids haven't barged in yet.
Yeah.
Was it just me?
Yes, but you're back.
Oh, can you just lie and say it was all of us? I feel better.
Yeah.
Happened to everyone. All right, I'm back, I'm back. I think the internet just gave up. Who was in the middle of all this before my Zoom quit online?
No, we both answered. We're good.
Beautiful. All right, next question. What are you going to do to support our police force while making sure that the very few bad cops are relieved of duty?
Well, you missed the tail end of my answer before, but, you know, I do think that we need to continue to make sure bad cops are relieved of duty. I think we have a history of that here in San Diego. I think the vast, vast majority of our police officers are good. They go into law enforcement because they want to help people. And so I don't think it's really a systemic problem in our department. Other, again, other departments across the country have their challenges and systemic problems. I don't think we have systemic problems in our department. But that doesn't mean we can't continue or shouldn't continue to be vigilant. One of the things that I've talked about in terms of supporting our police is actually expanding our reserve senior volunteer patrol and relying more on our reserve senior volunteer patrol for certain things that our other police officers shouldn't be involved in. I also support getting our police officers out of the homelessness business. There's way too much reliance on our SDPD for taking care of our homeless population. There's other areas like that as well that I would focus on and continue to maintain our police budget.
Thank you, Joe. Marty?
Yep. So, you know, in, at work the other day, I was talking to one of our police captains, and he said to me, Marty, no one hates a bad cop more than a good cop, because it ruins it for all of us. And it ruins the trust that we've built with our communities. And so I do believe that the police here in San Diego, as Joe pointed out, are dedicated to making sure that we do root out bad apples, and we do have more transparency. And I want to note that San Diego has been moving forward even before the events this summer in the murder of George Floyd. You know, we had actually put the ballot initiative together to do a new police review commission before all of this. And the police union is not standing in the way of that. I'm proud that our community came together with our police, our mayor, other folks affected and other stakeholders to come up with a collaborative solution. And that's what I want to see going forward as well. I want to make sure that we are supporting our officers with the training they need and the de-escalation training. I want to make sure they can afford to live in San Diego and get to know their neighbors who they're policing because we can't have community policing if we don't pay our officers enough to live in our communities. So those are some of my ideas.
Thank you, Marty. Last switch here. Does District Five need more affordable housing? And if so, how would you solve that issue? Marty, do you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, I do believe District Five needs housing affordability up and down the spectrum. You know, I am 37 years old. I became a lawyer, and I can't afford to buy a home here, mainly because I don't have the down payment. You know, I've been in public service all my life. I've never worked at a law firm. I've chosen to serve people with my career. And I can certainly afford monthly mortgage payments, but I don't have $120,000 stocked away for the down payment, nor do our teachers, or our police officers, or our firefighters. I talked to many parents in my district who are my parents' age in their 70s, and they're worried that their kids can't afford to live here either. Unless, so one thing I want to see is help with down payment assistance. Because a lot of us can, I mean, the rent is just as much as a mortgage payment. But if we did a monthly down payment assistance program with veterans, we did it with our police officers in the last budget year to allow them to break into the market, get our young college graduates a foot in the door, let them have equity in the housing market, and then a lot of people will have a step up. So those are some of the things I want to see. We should do it for teachers and firefighters as well.
Thank you, Marty. Joe?
Yeah, I agree that we need more affordable housing for people at all levels, meaning that our housing in San Diego and frankly throughout California is artificially high. There's a study several years ago that said 40% of the price of a home is due to government regulation. And so I think that's where we really need to focus. We need to focus on limiting the cost the government puts on the building of housing, because that just goes right to the consumer. Limiting the delay that government puts in approving certain housing once it already goes through appropriate processes. You know, things that we see now, like required solar on new homes, just goes to the bottom line of the consumer to pay. The in-lug fee in San Diego just goes to the consumer to pay. So a 1,200 square foot home, for example, in 2024 is gonna have an extra $30,000 just because of the city saying we're gonna charge an extra $30,000 on this home. That's what we need to do to make homes more affordable.
Thank you. And this will be our final question before your closing remarks. It's a hot topic. The park and ride lot at Scripps Highland Drive next to Yanni's Bar Grill is on the list of eight city-owned properties available to build for housing for most vulnerable residents. How do you plan to address residents and business owners' opposition to this initiative? Joe, you can go ahead and start us off.
Well, I have been told that as a city council candidate, we might actually sit on the city council. We can't take official positions on decisions like that that might come before us. But I'm certainly concerned about the concept that we see when talking about homelessness. And we also talk about in other areas of policy, that because there are nine council districts, every council district has to take an equal share of something. And in a lot of cases, we talk about that with homelessness and homelessness services. The nine council districts are artificial boundaries for political reasons. They're political boundaries. It doesn't mean that if somebody lives on the border of Scripps Ranch and Miramesa, they're not going to go to the Miramesa Senior Center, for example, in different districts. It's the same concept when we talk about homelessness services. We need to identify homeless services and place them where our homeless population or homeless neighbors can actually access them. So I am concerned about putting significant amount of homeless services in places like Scripps Ranch.
Thank you, Joe. Marty?
I actually am friends with the owners of Yanni's. I was just at their restaurant last weekend. And they're doing a great job with the COVID precautions and having people outside, taking care of their employees. So, and they wanted me to say thank you to the community for community to support them. But as Joe said, if we took an official position before getting on city council, we'd have to accuse ourselves from any vote, which wouldn't be helpful to our constituents. But in general, I know that's a thriving business area, and we need to make sure that there's enough parking for customers in front of businesses. So that's probably not the best place, you know, to take away from them. And, you know, homelessness is something we actually see in District Five, but we don't know it. I talked to the head of the Poway School Board, been endorsed by both the San Diego Unified and Poway School Board board presidents. And she told me that we have over 4,000 homeless students enrolled in Poway Unified. So a lot of them are doubling up in homes, living in garages, living in cars. So we need to make sure we have housing that they can access, but it should be closer to job centers. It should be closer to education centers and not causing more traffic on our roads and things like that. So those are some of the things I think about in terms of housing planning.
Thank you, Marty, and thank you, Joe. Before our candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you all for attending and asking such great questions. Please be sure you are registered to vote and that your address is correct at sdvote.com. This will all be available in our chat transcript as well. Be sure to fill out your census form at my2020census.gov. Also, please attend more League events where we will give in-depth information on all sides of critical issues affecting our communities. And now for the candidates' closing statements, each candidate will have two minutes. We will begin with Joe. As a reminder, the views expressed are those of the candidates, not of the League Women Voters. Members of San Diego, I want to thank the candidates for running. It's really, really hard. It's a lot of work, and you're going for it. God bless you. For running for office and attending our forum this evening. And thank you again. You are here tonight because you are following the League motto, "Don't just be a voter, be an informed voter." Registered voters receive their ballot in the mail. Drop it off or mail it by November 3rd and encourage others to vote as well. Thank you. And Joe, please take us away.
Thank you again for hosting this tonight. It's a pleasure to be here and a pleasure to answer questions that are concerns for all of you. If you have questions you didn't get answered, please go to my website, joeforsandiego.com. If you reach out through the contact form, it goes straight to me, and I'm happy to give you a call or answer any questions by email that you didn't get answered tonight. I really respect my opponent. Marty's a wonderful individual, accomplished, smart, hardworking. But we definitely have differences of opinion, differences of policy priorities. My wife and I have, we chose to live here in San Diego. And over the last 15 years, I've been spending my career building a business and also giving back to the community here for literally hundreds of hours every year, giving back to this community. And I was serving on the city's Ethics Commission and decided to run for office because I felt like my leadership of bringing people together of all different backgrounds is what the city needs, bringing people together to solve our challenges that we keep kicking down the road. And that's why I'm running. Like I said, I care about the future of our city for my three kids. I want them to be able to come back after college and live in San Diego, to be able to afford a house, to breathe clean air, to be able to drive in their car or take their bus or take whatever mass transit we might have. I want all of those things for my kids. And frankly, I want them to have good paying jobs. And I want the government to not be overtaxing them or increasing their property taxes or any of the other things that unfortunately we see government do that gets in the way of prosperity here in San Diego. So I would appreciate your support. Again, if elected, I really want to focus on getting our economy back in order, defending our police and supporting them however I can, making sure our roads are top priority in terms of our infrastructure, and making sure that we safely reopen our economy. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Marty?
Thank you. And Joe, I agree. It's been really great running this race with you. I think a lot of your ideas have changed a lot of my opinions too, and we're very lucky to have you in the district, honestly. And we do have different views on things, but, you know, one thing since this is especially the League of Women Voters panel, I want to take a minute to talk about a hero of mine, Ruth Biergenberg, who just passed away. As a woman lawyer, she broke so many barriers for me in the law that I never could have had the career I have had she not been here. And one of my favorite quotes of hers is, "Fight for the issues you care about, but do it in a way that leads others to join you." And so that's why my slogan has been from the beginning, "People over politics." I'm sick of the anger in the division that our national politics has created in our country. And that's why I go to everyone's doors, no matter what your party preference is. I talk to everyone because we all agree, as Joe said, on, we all want our roads paved. We all want our air clean, our water clean. There are so many local issues we can agree on, on good schools and good jobs. But to do that, we need people who have the experience to make sure District Five is well represented. You know, having worked in City Hall for years with the mayor's staff, I've worked with all the nine city council members. I've called the head of every department based on the lawsuits I've dealt with or the ordinances I've drafted. I will be able to get the resources for District Five that we need. I'm really worried that we don't have enough experience coming on. If we have five new city council members in the middle of a crisis, we need folks who know how City Hall works. So I'm glad that I can bring that to the table as well. And I want to focus on making sure that we do keep our environment safe for all of our kids to grow up in, making sure that, you know, our kids can afford to have houses in the communities they grew up in, like I'm striving to do. You know, making sure that everyone knows that they are welcome here, that, you know, no matter the color of their skin, no matter what religion or what faith or who they love. that, you know, no matter the color of their skin, no matter what religion or what faith or what who they love, they belong in San Diego, in Scripps Ranch, in Rancho Bernardo, in Carl Mountain and everywhere in between. So that's the kind of leadership I want to reflect, making sure that our city gets back on track. And thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you so much for joining us. Thank you again to our hosts and thank you again to all the attendees who spent the evening with us. We're actually gonna finish up a little bit early, which is amazing. I'm proud of us.